This is an Ashok Committee, although all all committee members are invited to attend and fully participate. Do you want to call the roll, Patty, for those present?
Sure. Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Gresham?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Absent.
Mrs. Hurst is on Zoom. And Mr. Murphy is on Zoom. I believe Denise, you're there, right? You said you do have it, right?
Yes, sorry, maybe we can understand something.
Oh, I was gonna say, it wasn't letting me unmute, but yes, I am here.
Oh, okay. All right. So the purpose of this meeting is to have Glenn, and as it says, it's an informational training vetting superintendent finalists in discussion regarding members' responsibilities in the candidate vetting, candidate vetting process. Glenn has a handout that he's passed out to everybody. And you're just going to go through it, Glenn? Is that fair?
Be happy to be interrupted by questions.
Yeah, it's usually easier if you've got a question to ask it while you're going.
And I've given copies of this material to the staff, so that if anyone wants to see it, there's nothing confidential here. This is all general information.
Okay.
And I've numbered the pages. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what the final stages of the search process look like. And those five phases include getting ready for the public interviews. At this stage of the search now, everything is public.
Okay.
So if you elect to have the candidates visit Springfield, or if you elect to visit the candidates in their home bases, there's guidance here for site visits to and from the district. We have some questions and lists of people that you might want to see or have the candidates see. We also have questions to be used if you're checking references. One of the best kinds of things to to ask about, they're not required, but there's a guide. Now, also, when you get to the very end of the process, we have a guide to voting to elect a superintendent. The process of what you do when there's a vote. Now, you may have local protocols that define what you do. And I'm assuming that a majority of the school committee is empowered to make a decision. So generally, at the school committee meeting, when you make a final decision, the chair would announce how many votes are required to elect the superintendent. And that's because different boards have different rules. And I'm assuming in your case, no matter how many people are in the room, it will take four votes to elect the superintendent?
The majority of those.
If two people are absent, can you do it on a three to two vote?
I think it's the majority.
Or is it, or is it a majority?
Present, present and voting.
Present and voting, okay. Do you allow voters, excuse me, do you allow members to vote yes, no, and present? Is present an option, or do you have to?
We've never used present before.
Okay, some do and some don't. So you, the chair will declare how many votes it's going to take to elect a superintendent. And the discussion begins about the candidates. And during the discussion.
So how would, how would that be any different than what we do normally?
Probably not different at all.
Majority.
It's probably not different at all.
Oh, okay.
But frequently, there are arguments about what a quorum is, how we go about deciding what to do, and then how we go about voting. So each member of the school committee would be given an opportunity to weigh in on all of the candidates that you will have interviewed, I'm assuming. And that at some point, the chair will either call for a motion, or the chair might call for an oral ballot. What I mean by that is, I know that's.
Was that yours? I liked the ring.
Usually after everyone has had a chance to talk about what they want to do, then the outcome is pretty clear and someone can make a motion. Although sometimes it's not clear, so the chair may go around the room and say, I'd like each member of the school committee to name their preferred candidate. And then if someone gets named four times, a motion is in order. The advantage of doing the oral ballot is that you get a sense of how it's going to end before you start the voting. And in that way, no one has to vote no unless they want to. For example, if you have candidates A, B, and C, and someone says, well, you like A, and you like B, and you like C, and you want to show support for all of your candidates. Well, someone may introduce a motion to hire A, and then the two of you are going to vote no. Or someone's going to have B, and then the two of you are going to vote no. But if you give the names of the candidates that you want, it will be very clear that either somebody has the votes or somebody doesn't. Then you keep talking until it becomes clear. The, the point is that it's good to have unanimity. It's good to save people from the trouble of having to vote no, but you vote any way you like because that's what works for you. When you hire a superintendent on a vote, we strongly recommend that the vote be that you hire a particular person to be your superintendent, effective on a particular date. So I'm making this up. You hire Terry Smith to be your superintendent. Hope there's nobody named Terry who's a candidate.
No.
I use the name Terry Smith because you can't tell whether Terry's male or female. It keeps everybody out of trouble. Terry Smith to be superintendent, effective July 1st, 2024, subject to the successful negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract of employment, signed by both parties. So if the school committee signs the contract, or you designate somebody to sign it. But if you decide to hire Person X, and Person X says, okay, I want 350,000 bucks. And by the way, you've already voted to hire me, so let's start at 350. Well, with the vote that you took, you can always say, I don't think we're going to have a mutually agreeable contract of employment. And you can go on from there. I've seen it happen a couple of times.
It's happened a couple of times this year.
Well, and I do, as I say to members of the school committee.
There could be, and there was one other one. Do you remember Latonia? Where they couldn't negotiate a contract with the person that they, it's happened twice this spring.
I don't remember which town it was, but it was local.
I would just say be prepared to walk away if the, if the negotiations don't work. So.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
At what point would we know what we're willing to offer and all of that? Would we make that determination? Should we, should we be having a conversation about that separate from like who we're voting on, like as far as what the contract will look like?
You are allowed to convene an executive session to discuss strategies for negotiating contracts with people who are not subject to collective bargaining. So the superintendent would be such a person. So if the school committee wanted to have a discussion at any time about what you would be willing to offer a candidate, or what you'd like to see in a contract, you can certainly do that. And you can convene an executive session to do it because you don't want to give away your bargaining position. And there's a lot more to the contract than just salary. As Yogi Berra used to say, there's a lot of things that are just as good as money, but they're not money. So you want to think about all of those things. And some of our cities, the fringe benefits are almost as important as the salary because some of them have cash value. Some of them are pensionable, and some of them are not. All of that stuff gets in, gets into the discussion.
Glenn, can I ask a follow up?
Yes.
Is that something that we would be doing before we select a person? Should we be doing that before?
You could do it before or after.
Okay.
Depends, but once you hire a person, you're going to have that person come in and sit with whoever you want to sit with. And I strongly recommend that your attorney be present for those negotiations. I will also add that the first call that your successful candidate is likely to make the following day is to the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, who have a model contract of their own, which we suggest you never agree to. I, I'm just telling. We, we have a model contract of our own. I'm sure that your legal counsel can advise you. There are some things that superintendents like to get in their contracts that we suggest you never agree to.
Our last two superintendents had vastly different contracts. One was heavy, other than salary on fringes, and one was no fringes. Other than health insurance and.
You know, as they say, there are, there are strategies that movie stars use when they're negotiating a contract. Someone once said to me, Paul Newman says, I want a share of the gross. Robin Redford would say, I want a share of the net. And Arnold Schwarzenegger would say, I want mine now. So there are people who would say, a lot of people say, I get my health insurance from my spouse. I don't need it from you. I'd like that in salary. But it's more than just numbers. The Superintendent's Association would have you agree in writing that any complaints that are brought to your attention should be reported immediately to the superintendent. Now, if a constituent comes to you, as is their right, and they want to complain about teacher, a school, somebody that affects their kids, and they want to do it in confidence, they don't want to be exposed, that's their right. They have a constitutional right to, to talk to you. If you are required to tell the superintendent that I have a complaint that comes from parent X about teacher Y, that makes it very awkward for constituents to come to you. So we strongly recommend that you not put something like that in your contract. You want the rights of the school committee members to have conversations with their constituents that can be treated, well, they're not legally confidential, but you want them to be private to the extent that you can. Also, you want to think very carefully about what happens with leave time and how much leave time people are allowed to accumulate. We had a superintendent in Randolph, who over the course of his career had never taken a sick day or a vacation day. And when, and when he retired, he took $535,000 in unused vacation time with him, based on the terms of his contract, which had been negotiated 10 years earlier by people who were long gone and hard to find. So that's why you want, when it comes time to contracting, those are the things that are very important. But let me, let me go back to where we were at the beginning, and that is when you, you now have the names of the people who are going to go to the final stage. And there are three of them.
Yes.
So there are some different strategies for what you do when you interview these people. We recommend, this is a very important decision. This is, this is, this is for some of you, the second dance, but for many of you, the first dance with this candidate. So we, we recommend that you talk to this candidate for like 75 to 90 minutes. I mean, you want to, you want to have a good, solid conversation and a thorough vetting of the candidate so that whoever you choose, you can legitimately say, we put some pretty diligent questions out there. Now, interestingly enough, the Attorney General does not allow you to discuss as a group in confidence the questions you will ask. Questions have to be either developed personally by you to be used by you, or by the board at a public session. It's very awkward. And the same rules apply to executive sessions for, for the screening committee. So it's kind of weird thing, but that's what the law is. Many times, school committee members wish to bring their own questions to the interviews. So if there are seven of you, you might each think about a couple of questions, or have three or four questions lined up so that you can get two of them in, maybe three of them in, depending upon what other people have prepared. And if you keep your questions to yourself until you're ready to ask them, of course, that makes them public immediately, but, but that's okay. There is, there is a rumor that everybody has to be asked the same question in the same order. I think that's an urban myth. It's, it's a good process and a good practice to have everybody answering the same questions. But I also encourage you to do follow up questions. If the, you ask a question and the candidate doesn't answer the question you wanted to be asked, but turns it around and answers a different question, you want to be able to follow up and say, no, 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 here's what I want. So whatever you do, the follow up questions are rarely scripted, but always determined during the interview to find out what you need to follow up on.
Common to have a mix of both? Where each member here has their question, but we know we've got a question that we want everybody to answer. Like your reason why you believe you're.
Totally up to you.
That's so.
Totally up to you. And you can determine those ahead of time as a board, but not in executive session.
Not in executive session.
We could do it, do it later after we leave and come up with whatever questions you think might be good. But that's, that's the rule about how that works. Now, are you meeting this room? Will it be done in this room?
Probably not. Because we'll need to have it in a place that has enough room for the public and can be, and where television can help.
Okay, a clock is very important to these things.
Okay.
Because there are some people who will go until you stop them. And you may be, are you planning on seeing everybody on the same night? Or were you planning on inviting the candidate to visit Springfield for a day? And then having them interview at the end of the day? Some, some districts do that.
I don't know that we've ever done that here. We've had them all visit ahead of time.
Okay.
And then they're, the court, the interview.
You can do it any way you want. But please allow the same amount of time for each candidate. Now, if they run overtime, they run overtime. That, that's, that's in goodwill, but.
So when you say it's good to have, you mean like a good visible clock?
Well.
And probably more visible for the person who's doing the answering so they know that they're not running on.
We have a little, you know, teacher sample with a clock in the middle that we give to the candidate to look in the front so that while they're answering, they can see a little, little clock just that they know where they are. And I will warn you, if they can't shut up during the interview, they won't shut up when they're superintendent. You know, there are, my record is two and a half hours on a 75 minute interview. I've seen people go that long because they just thought we were all having such a wonderful time. And, and after it got to be 11 o'clock at night, people just started to say, okay, thank you, enough is enough. And that person never got invited back to any place, but it's a warning. So it's usually good for the school committee members to see a clock and for the candidate to be able to see a clock, and we can, we can assist you with that when it happens. When you're ready to, to interview them, you are free to do it in any order that you like. And, but it's the school committee that should do the interviewing. The, the audience really doesn't get to participate in that part. But if the candidate visits Springfield for a day, and at the end of the day, you do a meet and greet with the community, then all the people who weren't able to be on the search committee, or the screening committee, or meeting the candidates during the earlier periods, will now have a chance to see the candidate. And to go from there. So.
So I'm going to ask a question. So if we wanted, say, all the candidates to come to like a school and invite the public to ask questions, or just to know who they are, can that, that can be done?
You can do whatever you want.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I don't know if you can see my hand raised on the screen.
No, we can't, but just, so just do what you did, just.
Just chime in.
Just chime in, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Glenn, I, I think I had a, a follow up to Barbara's question. So the whatever the process we use is the process that we have to use with all three candidates. I understand that they might not all get the same questions. But if we do a public forum, for one, we must do it for all three.
You must offer the opportunity to all three, yes, that, that would be a strongly recommended practice.
Okay, and does that, do they happen all on the same night, or each candidate gets their own evening?
I've seen it both ways, Denise. I've seen, although I don't know, I don't think I've ever seen it all on the same night. I think when I watched them in other cities and towns and here, if they come to a visit to the system, the end of that day, they usually have a public forum to meet and greet and question the candidate. So it's on the day that they're visiting.
That, that has become, that's become more common, that the people, and you know, I'm looking at the screen, Mrs. Hurst. So I don't know whether you, what this, this looks like to you in front of your computer, but it is, it has become more common to invite the candidates to spend a day in the district using, following the same, the same schedule. And then interview at the end of the day. But we also have examples where two or three candidates will come to the district and have different schedules, so they're staggered all at the same time. But at some point, everybody gets a meeting with the community at large, and everyone gets a public interview. Or you just scatter people around the district for the day and then invite them back for interviews on separate days. It, if you've seen the way one district does it, you've seen the way one district does it. But you must offer the same opportunities to everyone. So you wouldn't say, your parent, the community meeting's going to be a half an hour, but yours is going to be an hour and a half. That's, that's not right. You want the same opportunities.
Glenn, can you speak a little bit about, I, I understand the importance of, of their time in Springfield. We have one candidate who's from out of district. How is it more important or the same to go and visit their, the sending district? Or to have them visit our district? And I know that the last time we did this, we did both.
You're talking about, about site visits to the sending district?
Correct.
Yes, it is, it has been the practice that the candidate will set up visits to their district for you to meet with the local stakeholders. Now, that has become less common. And I'll just tell you why. The candidates who are hosting those visits are in a very awkward position. No one's really comfortable during them. But they do give you an opportunity to go to a city, meet with others, and get a perspective on the candidate. Especially if it's a candidate who you don't know personally, who hasn't, you know, if there are people who are in the area, people who have had media coverage, people who are known, well, you know who they are and you know what they are. But there are people who aren't that well known or might be from someplace that might make you want to do a site visit. I know that we, we do very few site visits to sending districts now than we did in the past. The candidates are always encouraged to come to the potential home district. But because of the awkwardness, the difficulty, the difficulty in scheduling, we don't see as many visits to the sending districts. But you could absolutely still ask to do that and have that set up. And if you do that, you should offer that to all of the candidates who want to do that. And if you have an internal candidate, then school committee is, would be welcome to visit those areas and work in supervision that you might not otherwise normally see in the home district too.
Denise was right. Denise, when she was talking, said, last time we did both. We went to their district and had them come here.
You can do that.
For all three candidates.
Totally appropriate. And not unusual, but as I say, visits to the sending district are less, are less frequent than they used to be. I have a, a list here of questions, of people that you, questions you might want to ask during visits. They're on page four and four and five, people you might want to see.
Four and five or three?
Four and five, three.
Four and five. Three is for reference checking.
Okay.
Four and five would be questions that might be asked of the candidate who arrives or the, the district that you're going to visit. And there are, we certainly recommend that you speak to your fellow school committee members wherever you happen to be looking. I'm, I'm a strong advocate for talking to the chief executive officer of the city or town and the police chief. Police chiefs are very important because they work with school districts. And the chiefs, they have a very good perspective. Or you have your own police chief, make a call to the sending district police chief. They're very good at telling you who works well with the community and who doesn't.
Glenn?
Yes.
So the list, I can't see the list, but the list that you have of those that we should speak to is, can that be a supplement to the references that the candidates provide?
Yes, yes.
So they don't have to be listed for the individual?
Correct.
Okay.
And on page three, when you're looking at references, oh, by the way, you could do a virtual site visit too, if you want. The candidate could set up a series of interviews for you at the, at the sending district. And you could talk to everybody who might be more easily available. You can work on that because you, you still have six weeks to go before the end of the school year. When you're doing reference checking, these are some questions that we like to ask of the references, that is, you know, what's the nature of, I'll repeat these for the purpose of those people that don't, that don't have this in front of them. What's the nature of your work with the candidates? How do you know the candidate? This person, a good communicator inside and outside the school district? Is this person culturally proficient? What's this person like as a person? I often ask, you know, if we were all having dinner together and this person were here, would we enjoy having that person for dinner? Is this person a good collaborator? Can this person manage money? Now, I know you have strong fiscal monitoring capacities here in Springfield. We've had a number of districts that have found out this late in the year, they've got a deficit. How do you deal with that? How do you prevent that from happening? And, you know, you don't want the superintendent throwing the business manager under the bus. You want the superintendent knowing something about how to count money. And a lot of them can't. Have you seen this person grow during the time that you've known them?
I have a question, Glenn.
Yes.
So to Denise's point earlier, two of our candidates are internal in the district. And a lot of these people that we have identified that we would need to talk to, I guess my concern is like, how do you know if you're getting a true assessment when somebody maybe feel like they have to say certain things because they may work with this person?
Well, you can talk to some people whose names were not provided to you. You can talk to the school board. We can give you some guidance about other people that you might want to talk to.
Okay.
But there's no denying that you often don't know what you have until the person arrives and you see them acting in a different capacity.
Right.
One of the areas where we've seen superintendents have particular challenges is when they come to a new district. People who might be coming from several hundred miles away, so they don't have a base here. They don't have people that have their back. And, and, you know, how, how might they respond to coming in? To, uh, coming in and dealing with the faculty that doesn't know them. And doesn't have any loyalty to them. And, uh, might not be supportive of them. How do they make friends? But you don't know that until you have that experience, so probing with the references, you know, what are the challenges they faced? How are they managing people? What do they do if they don't get their way? How do they convince people to come along?
And that's to, that's not just for the people they provided as residents.
Correct, that's everybody.
That's whomever, because you were saying, like, talk to the mayor, the chancellor, chairman of the board of selectmen or the police for that.
We're seeing a big emphasis now on empathy. Does this person care about other people or is this person obsessed with self?
Right.
The, the, the professional achievers, look at all I've achieved, well, what's your mission in life? To achieve, what are you going to, what are you going to achieve? Achievement. Yeah, the, the, the. The resume builders who will talk about all the different things that they've done. To make themselves more visible or more popular. Oh, and does this person get the big picture? Does this person have vision? How? Give us some explanations. That's why your interview with the candidates should be deep and thorough. To try to pull this stuff out and you can ask the candidates of some of these questions. Have you managed money? Uh, how do you supervise? What are your strategies? What's your, what's your management style? And, um. And anybody who uses the word robust. Get rid of them. I'm sorry.
So one of our candidates is coming from a. A district that's made up of several towns. So. If, if, if that state is similar to us, they probably got. Finance committees in each one of those separate towns. They might have a whole different state take on what the school department has done with their money. That might be somebody that you might.
Well, it, yes. Now, this is a big district. This Springfield is a big, is a big district. If. Uh, I don't want to pick on anybody in particular, but if your current superintendent, who was used to be the head of a large organization. Were suddenly made, okay, he's going into retirement, I wish him well, been a great superintendent and you should be very proud of that. But let's say he gets bored and he wants to be an interim superintendent somewhere and he goes to a really small town. That needs somebody like that. That might not work out because I, we had such a superintendent who retired. And then went to work in a very, very, very small district, you know, two days a week. And he said to me, yeah, this afternoon I was typing the contract for our principal. Me, I was at the typewriter typing the contract. Now, somebody who's a big district superintendent is not going to be, is going to be wanting to do. Those things, don't want to manage a big operation, so you'll ask different questions. From those people who might be closer to the ground. That you have.
Yeah, we've got regional districts around here where the finance boards in the different towns don't agree with each other, so.
I, I will tell you.
Probably a wealth of information.
A smaller district has the same problems you do, just with a, with a smaller number of people. Got to assume that this is somebody who wants to, um. Somebody who wants to help me refinance my student loans. And I haven't had a student loan for 50.
I was going to say, you still get student loans.
Okay.
You'd be a record breaker.
Yeah, really. So they're simple and, and, and we have a, a thing I have shared with. With you. Our question compendium, which has dozens and dozens of questions and sample interviews, none of it's copyrighted. Some of the questions are really good and thoughtful.
The screening committee got that, we didn't get it, did we?
Yeah, it was pretty thick.
Well, they can.
It was like various samples that had.
Yeah.
Multiple samples, so.
Forty pages long.
Did we get that?
I don't think we did, but we could, if it's, if it's available.
Well, if it hasn't been sent to you already, I can, I can get it to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
I can send it to him too, yeah.
You've got it?
Yeah.
Well, basically, the screening committee, I believe, utilized that, didn't you send that?
Yes.
To them?
Well, it's, it's public documents, so you can, can only use it. You know, for example, uh, we, we had a candidate who came into. Uh, an interview and, and you know, each and every boy and girl should have every single opportunity to get the best textbooks, the finest buildings. The same opportunities, all right, well, that tells you. So the person in the room asking the question said, well, let me ask you a question then. If textbooks make a difference. How can you as the superintendent? Make student achievement grow by intervening in the selection of textbooks? Tell us about that, or tell us about how you as the superintendent make a difference in budgeting. Or you as the superintendent make a difference in leadership and please be very specific. Or else I'm going to ask some of my, my questions in a less friendly manner than I'm doing now. So, you know, sometimes prosecutors make great interviews.
Yeah.
Because they know how to get what they want from people who don't want to answer questions. And, and your best candidates do want to answer your questions. So, um. There is that.
So I have another question about the folks that we would interview, I mean, would reference. Do we meet to discuss who we're calling? Or how does that work? Like, when, when we decide how we're going to do the calls and do the reference checks? Then I say, this person, I'm thinking of district people right now because there's two district people, but like. This person might be a good person to call. Do I need to address that with the, in a meeting first? Like, how does, what does that look like?
You should work out a strategy for who's going to, to speak to whom so that you're not all calling the same people.
Yeah, the last time what we did was split up and assign people to, like you and Peter went.
Me, Pete and, and, um, what's the name?
Yeah.
Or you could, or you could.
Yeah, yeah.
You could do it together and get on the phone.
But if we did that and, and there's three candidates and six of us. Then I would assume we'd have people pair up and I think it's important that the two of, the two people talk together. Uh, so that they know what they're doing, but I don't know.
And if you do that, uh, you may want to check directly with me because. Uh, we have often vetted some of the same people that other people are vetting and we can give you some sense of who to talk to and, and. And help you with that. But I, I would not have seven people all calling the same.
Doesn't make a lot of sense, I mean, we can get together and just bring you, but we did.
And then, uh, you're free to discuss what you've learned when you meet as a body. And you may meet as a body just to get feedback from your. Referencing and then make decisions on another night. Or you may want to share it all at the same time and proceed to a vote.
I think we, if I recall, we had a separate meeting where we shared. Um, what we found out with visits and references.
They'll come back and report.
So those are the, those are the basic steps. That occur at this point. And I would move expeditiously because. You know, I don't, I don't know where your candidates may be looking elsewhere. And we're getting close to the end of the year. You, you don't want to lose somebody because they've been selected somewhere else. If your candidate is no longer available. And it's the school committee, um, as a body is in complete charge of that, the rest of the process. As we say, the majority rules minority rights. So. There's always a plan B if things don't work out. There are variations on plan B, so if that becomes an issue, we can, we can deal with that as well. And we're at the other end of the phone, if anybody has any questions. That are not related to matters of law. As I've said to you before. My legal education comes from watching Law and Order on Wednesday nights and every runs of Night Court and that's.
Night Court's probably a better one.
You might, you might, you are.
I see there's, there's a sample in here for a visit and these are just meant for templates, right? Actually, a lot of material over here.
It's more, it's more time consuming than it is complicated, but I think you'll find. Many of the references are happy to talk to you and the ones that are. Read between the lines, listen carefully. See what you hear and what you don't hear and we are able to call our colleagues. In other states, the executive directors of the school boards association, we all talk to each other. So we will often praise or warn. A colleague in another state, this is a good person. This is somebody you might want to be careful of. And they share that information with us. So. That's what I have and I'd be happy if you have any other questions to. To respond to them. I, I will say. Given what you've done in the last decade. The district is a very desirable one. It's a good place to be a superintendent.
Yeah.
And it's a good opportunity for the candidates. And you can call us anytime.
So it actually sounds like we're going to need to get the whole, do a committee of the whole. Have some discussion about whether we break up or not. And do some things as a body, as a whole body. I think you're going to need to call a committee of the whole and make some of these. Uh, these decisions as a group as to what we want to do and I assume we want to, we're going to, well, three, mostly, so.
Yep.
And a, and a vetting and a. Well, we can talk about it, but I like the idea of them coming and having a public session at the end of their visit too.
Chris, may I ask a question?
Go ahead Denise, anytime, we, we can't see you, so.
No, I know, I know, it's okay, I was just waiting for a pause. I, I was waiting for, for a pause and I'm, and I'm happy to show you my face as well. I, I was going to ask. Is, I heard you mention a, a meeting of the whole. And I'm wondering. If there is a schedule, like even a preliminary draft schedule, very similar to what we do with the budget. That could be created just because. Many of us have other commitments and we need to be able to, to plan accordingly, but I'm also thinking about. The community and making sure that they have it on their calendar to be able to come out and meet these three candidates.
So when you, you mean a draft schedule, not just for us, but for like timelines, maybe for, for visits by candidates in community meetings with them?
Correct.
Trying to get everything into it?
Correct.
Yeah, I can take a stab at putting some together and then have Patty send it to everybody. I think the first step would be all of us getting together and kind of deciding. How we want to do, do we want to break up into teams? Go do the visits, whether they be local or, or Vermont. And just decide what we want to do. And I do like the idea of, which you can discuss at that, is having some general questions. Besides our own questions that we develop because that's, I think there's a way to get people to talk a lot for that.
Can I also really quickly ask, Glenn, are the questions? That are posed to the candidates at the public forums, those are, those are just. Those are not scripted questions by us, those are questions that are posed to the candidate by the actual members of the community.
Either way, you might have questions that the group has decided they want to make sure get asked. And then there may be members who have specific questions that they want to pose to the candidates by themselves. Uh, the, the general practice has been that members of school committees have wanted to have their own questions. Drafted by them and asked by them. And they don't want to, they often don't want to let those out ahead of time. That's why, uh, the average school committee member.
I think you're talking interview and Denise is talking public meeting.
Right, I'm talking about when, yes.
For the public meetings, for the public meetings, I would set up a microphone and, and. Whoever is, is moderating can say, here's the candidate, there's the microphone. Who wants to ask a question? Please pose and ask the question. And those are, those are now done usually live, but frequently hybrid with. The opportunity for people to ask questions remotely.
Okay, thank you.
The, the interesting thing about these is when we're interviewing finalists, we do get a lot of people who show up.
Oh, yeah.
When we're doing. Uh, survey visits, you know, feedback visits with the community, most people are remote and very few people show up. Because that they don't see as important as actually having an opportunity to engage the potential superintendent. Yeah, I, anyone who wants to ask a question should be free to come up to the microphone and ask it and. We found that, that a 90 minute session with the candidate can fly by. With lots of questions being asked. You do want to have a moderator there, uh, it's usually a member of the school committee. Who is, is just, you know, telling the community, here I am, I'm your representative, welcome, ask a question. Uh, just to, just to see you, a friendly face, the community is not intimidated by the presence of its own elected officials. At a public meeting, sometimes teachers are reluctant to speak freely. Just because they're always concerned about retaliation and. Uh, if, you know, if I ask a question about what are you going to do about the fact that there's a terrible morale problem at our school? Well, you open up a can of worms and you don't want to do that. But they might do it if you had a, if the candidate visited a school in addition to doing a public meeting. When they visit a school, we never recommend that the administrators and teachers be in the same room. Teachers will not be frank and forthcoming if their administrators are sitting in the room. But you can work all of that out to make it work and we can assist you in developing the schedule. If that's helpful.
Do you, you, you told, you said that you're doing a lot more of these like Zoom type for the community meetings?
The, uh, the meet and greet meetings are, are now often done hybrid style.
Right.
Particularly if there's a large meeting with the community at the end of the day. Uh, you have people in the audience and you have people who are.
Do you worry about? Somebody on Zoom saying something very inappropriate?
Well.
I mean, or do you, like, remember when we did the one on, on COVID where they submitted their questions and we read them? Yeah, I mean, do you worry about somebody?
Well, you, you could do that, but you know, public comment period now in Massachusetts. If somebody comes in to public comment period and goes off, that's now free speech. Of course, there are limits to that if it gets.
I wasn't thinking about their, what they're asking, it's more. The bombs that we all hear about.
The bomb, the bombs, or, uh, you can ask people at home to use the chat box to send you questions.
And that worked well when we did the COVID one, we had somebody monitor it.
And as long as you're.
Because some of them were so similar that they just grouped.
Yeah.
Questions.
Yeah. But if you open up, if you have public comment period, it's fair game now.
Yeah.
Based on the recent Northborough decision.
But there's also, they can't speak about a particular student, like there, where you do have some, the school committee has a, a policy that prohibits. In a public session.
Privacy rights.
Raising personnel issues or students, specific student issues, so those are limited, there is some limitation.
Yeah, so we just have to. Warn people that, you know, when you're asking a question, please don't use individuals' names or, or anything when you're doing that. Whoever monitors these, these, I like the idea of the. I like the idea of the public meeting and the public having a chance.
Yes. So with the public meetings, I have a question. Would they all, would all three candidates be there?
Well, one at a time.
One at a time.
One at a time, one at a time.
Typically, the day they would come visit.
Okay.
They're scheduled.
Each individual candidate should have.
Their own time.
Visits of them for themselves that they don't share with anyone.
Okay.
So again, available if you need to use this for whatever reason.
But Denise, that's a good idea because we all, we're all getting very, this time of year, our time is, is crazy. With all our two weeks worth of graduations and.
Yeah, you have graduations. I mean, how many schools do you have?
We do, well.
Do you do eighth grade graduations?
No, 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 no. Even just, just for our high schools, it takes two full weeks.
Don't do eight days, the schools do.
We have nine. We have nine high school graduations that we do.
Nine days. Because some of the graduations have two or three schools.
In, in the one graduation.
You guys speak at those graduations?
Usually one of us speaks at the graduations, yeah. Not all of us, one of us.
Those, those, those are tough assignments. High school graduations are tougher than eulogies. Because nobody wants to get, everybody wants their diploma.
They don't want to hear you. Yeah, that's, usually, usually, most of us will make that joke. We know you don't really want us up here talking, so we'll be short.
Okay.
So if you want, I'll try to draft something together where, because I think we should have the committee of whole really quickly to kind of decide what we're doing. That gives us some guidance. And that might actually alter some of the calendars.
Yeah, you could do that meeting by Zoom. It would be a public meeting. But you could do it by Zoom, or you could, or you could do it here. But the questions that you'd be thinking about and the logistics you'd be putting together, discussion would, would have to be open to the public.
If we're talking about questions to ask the.
Scheduling, no, scheduling is, is is exempt from the open meeting laws, as long as you're just trying to find dates to have meetings.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I, that's what Denise was saying. And that would just be like, here's some proposed dates for doing these kinds of things.
Right, and, and when we did the public input forums, like it was, it was laid out, right? Like everybody had the dates in advance. And if they couldn't make it to one, then they knew that the following Tuesday, they could make it to another. And so because that is not going to be the case, it just would be good to be able to lay out for people, like these are the three dates of when this candidate is going to be present and when this one is going to be present and when that one's going to be present.
Yeah, because those are, these are, these are very different. These are individual candidates. I agree, they're very, very different meetings and people, some people have a big desire to go to some and some won't. But being able to do it virtually as well, although I still, we can talk about, I'm still a little concerned with live questions on virtual that we don't. But we can work that out, what we think is the best.
Okay.
Okay, how many days? Let me see, you got a calendar? Two weeks we have? Not even?
Two, a little bit over two. I would, I would assume that we'd try to like, and tell me if you guys think you're other, but where they do the visit and the public meetings, we would like to have close to the time where we're going to do the public interview, not like. It would seem like that, as, what do you guys think? Is that, does that make sense?
Can you say that?
Well, the, where the, where the candidates do their visit of the school. And then there's the public meet and greet. I would assume we'd like those in proximity to the time that we're planning to do the final interview. So everything's fresh in people's mind.
Well, yeah, I'm just looking at the calendar, thinking that it would have to be next week.
Yep.
Because we have Memorial Day weekend and always doing, working on that Monday. So you have, we have a meeting scheduled on the 30th. So we would need to be looking at next week. And then we would have that Tuesday and Wednesday following week.
To do, in order to do three, you're right. So we would have to get together pretty quickly for, for a committee of the whole.
The next, those, I think, actually.
Well, next?
We have some.
We, we have the retiree recognition, but we could, we could utilize some time prior or after that to do. Maybe to use to do, to talk about reference stuff.
That retiree recognition is not, is scheduled at 7:00 PM.
That's scheduled at seven.
Right.
So we would have time before. I mean, it might be an opportune time to kind of us get together and discuss what we found out with our reference checks.
Well, how would we, when, so that means we would be doing reference checks between when to?
Between today and a week from tomorrow. We would try to.
So I'm sorry, maybe I missed that. So is there a list? How would we know who we were calling to reference check?
We have, we need to get together as a group like either tomorrow or the next, if we can't do that because we, we got to have a public. Maybe Monday and decide who's going to do reference checking.
I mean, on the 20th?
Yeah, because we can't, we need 48 hours, right? And I don't think anybody's available on Friday because I think we tried to schedule a different meeting and Friday was difficult. People around on the 20th, at least, to try to decide whether we're going to have people who might check references?
I'm available on the 20th.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Denise.
I said I am available on the 20th. I can be available anytime after 3:00 PM.
What's it look like for you, Latonya?
I have something next week. I got to confirm facilitating for a group. And it's not on my calendar for some reason, so I have to confirm.
Okay.
I'm good. I, I can do the 20th.
Well, let's shoot for the 20th. What did you say, Denise? Anytime after?
Three.
Three? Usually we try to do, what we use, what we use subcommittee meetings are like 4:30. Does that sound like a, use that kind of a time?
Yes, I, I, I have some flexibility during the day, so I can do anytime after, after three on that Monday, the 20th.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, Josiah is not here to ask and he might have the strictest schedule. I'm not sure. But why don't we send out an inquiry tonight? Maybe Patty? Just to ask Josiah and, and Peter could zoom in to see whether 20th, it'd be good to have a committee of the whole.
That will be here.
We could do that here. We could do it, like Glenn said, we can do a Zoom, too, if, if that works. But I think sometimes being in the same room together is helpful. And you're, you're at the 27th. Is that, that's Memorial, that's Memorial Day, isn't it?
Uh huh.
Time is flying, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. We'll have to post it by tomorrow at whatever time you decide. But it has to be by.
If we can get response from people to soon, to either be here or Zoom Monday. Just looking at that, at that 27, just thinking a lot. We may, we may be looking at Friday for interviews. That way we'd, we'd have, we'd have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for visits and public meet and greet sessions for the candidates.
So when you say Friday, you mean the 24th?
31st.
Oh, the 31st.
First, I have a, I have a, a trip planned for the 31st. So I already know in advance that I will not be in the state on the 31st.
Okay, then that doesn't work.
And really quickly, before I forget, Patty, is it possible I'm going to be downtown tomorrow? Can I walk over and get the same packet that everybody has this evening? Can I pick it up tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon?
Yep.
Thanks.
Well.
So.
Then it looks like 24, 28, 29 might be potential dates for.
I can't do the 24th. So what?
Have to do the 24th. I mean, for, I mean, for candidates to come here.
Oh, okay.
Now, that wouldn't be far. I assume we have somebody from, it wouldn't be one of us escorting them.
Could be. Or it might be somebody from the community, the, the school district that you want to have do them.
Yeah, maybe, because I don't know that they want to have us. Somebody might say you have all this private time with them, if you're with them all day or, you know, we could have some.
It's frequently a school committee member.
Is it really?
To escort them around?
But it is also equally often that a member of the central office or a principal or somebody is assigned to take them around. You have a, you have other people who might department heads who might want to take them around, it can be anybody.
We can look for that, too.
It's going to be interesting.
The timeframe.
The timeframe is so short.
It's, it's, it's crazy.
So what, what I would say is that we need to find a day for the meeting we have to have. The one that the executives, the, the executive session that we have to have to discuss the things that we can't talk about in a public meeting, that Glenn mentioned.
I think that's in.
After the vote, though.
Which ones are you talking, you talking about the contract stuff?
It wasn't just the contracts.
Or was it, was it questions we have to do in public?
Right, it was something. I know it was the contracts and the strategy. But I know the, the contract we could do after, so I know it's not as present.
Yeah, that's.
At meeting. But I thought it was another part of it that we needed to talk about. So either way, we're going to have a meeting together before we go into doing the references and stuff like that. That's the plan, right?
We're hearing for, for Monday.
So if it's Monday, is it, Denise says she's not available until after 3:30, you said?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock?
She said 3 o'clock.
If we can literally do it like 3, 3:30, that would work for me. I can't really do anything after 5.
Which date? I'm sorry, which date were you referring to?
A Monday meeting, Denise.
Yep.
She's, she's.
Monday, the 20th?
Yeah, she's agreeing with you on the, on the, like 3 o'clock.
Yep.
I could make that work. Barbara, can you make that?
Oh, yeah, I can make it work, 3 o'clock.
Okay.
And Peter, are you still on?
No, he's not.
Oh, so you can see more when you're, when you're zooming in than we can.
Yeah, no, he's not on.
We can ask him to, we can see if he could zoom into that.
If he can do that, then.
Well said.
There's only, yeah, I just did want to, you know, there was a lot of misconception about whether the, who, what candidates the screening committee were supposed to see. Who, the screening committee was supposed to see people who met the minimum criteria. Is that, is that the way it was?
Was my understanding.
Yeah.
Now, you, you, you set your criteria.
The minimum criteria was in the application.
Yeah. And we, because there are so many people watching these things, you have to honor the criteria that you set. So sometimes that can bat fire. Sometimes it doesn't, but you have no alternative but to honor the criteria that you set. And my understanding was, and then by the way, I've had three or four different districts this year deal with the same question. The candidates that they might like but didn't meet the minimum criteria and they can't hit them forward because they set minimum criteria what they were. So that was my understanding of what you had agreed to. Now, what you do about that going forward is up to the committee about how to deal with that. I mean, I had, we, your legal counsel and I had this discussion and we shared our independent thoughts and we were both of a consistent mind that in order to protect you legally, that was the process that you had to follow.
Right, and the, the other issue I wanted to just was there would, Josiah had asked me to put something on the agenda about that would have gone against that. And I asked him to call you to get advice on that, and then I called you as well.
Yes.
That was on the 4th. And your advice was to not do that without getting legal review because there was.
Discuss this with your legal counsel, who has followed this from the start. But also that, so I recall it was too close to the scheduled meeting to add an item to the agenda.
No.
And I forget, I forget, I forget what the issue was.
That wasn't the case. So I, I just want to clarify, first of all. The problem was that we wanted to have a conversation as to whether or not that was the case. And we asked to have items put on the agenda to discuss that as a body.
Right.
And we were told that we could not, not to restart the process, not to change the process, but to clarify what we discussed and what we approved.
Okay.
And we were never allowed to have that happen.
Didn't go on the agenda.
So it never went on the agenda for the ad hoc committee and it never went on the agenda for the full body. And so we pursued to try to have a special meeting or some type of conversation. And the vice chair, even though our policies say that he is able to add things to the agenda, he was not provided that opportunity to do so. So that was the problem.
So Robert's Rules of Order would have said that you could by majority vote add an item to the agenda.
Yes.
Now, I don't know what your district bylaws or some.
It's the same.
Okay. So that, that would have to wait for the subsequent meeting in order to do that.
Right, and that never happened. So we, we did as a majority vote, asked for it. We did as a majority request it. And even in a public meeting as a point of order, did clarify that these things were expected to be discussed. And according to what we voted on in that meeting at Putnam that you were also part of, we were to be informed of what was happening. And if there were any changes or questions, we should have been able to meet as a body to clarify. So my understanding in the meeting was that the screening committee was supposed to be able to look at all the applicants and understand why somebody was screened out. I did not know that one individual was going to be the person to determine whether or not people met minimum qualifications and make that determination. So I inquired and said, can we please discuss this? And when I mentioned it to our vice chair, he did what he would do. Asked for an item to be put on the agenda so that we could discuss it. Because that was my understanding of it. We never got a chance to discuss whether or not that was the case because we never got a chance.
So there remained a question in your mind about whether or not there were candidates who in fact did meet the minimum criteria, but who were determined not to have met the minimum criteria.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we never got that clarified.
Okay.
Right.
Can I just?
What I was asking Glenn about was Josiah's request to me was very specific for our meeting. Can you put the agenda item on giving the screening committee permission to see everybody's resume? That's what I asked him to go to Glenn. And that's when Glenn said, do not put that on an agenda item until you've had a legal review. It was different from what you're saying.
Right, but the question.
Very specific to me.
The question I asked, I asked publicly. So the, the way that I just stated, I asked it multiple times and I asked it publicly. And on the meeting that I walked out of, that was because I was being told that I was asking something that I was not asking and that I was trying to violate a process that I was not trying to violate. I wanted clarification and because I know our Robert's rules and because I know our policies, I knew I had a right to be asking that. And so I was very frustrated that we were in a public meeting with expectations that we would follow our own policies and Robert's rules of order, and we did not do that. And so at this point, we have three candidates before us that in a lot of ways, I feel very much that the integrity of the process has been breached several times. The public feels that way as well. But this is where we're at. We've exposed the names and now we're going to go through the process from here to ensure that we're doing things properly. But I want to clarify, my question was never to do anything, any actions. My question was to be able to have a conversation and we never got to do that.
Right. Can I just weigh in on this? I, I 100% agree. I appreciate that clarification from both Ms. Mon, Ms., from Latonya or Ms. Monroe Naylor and from you, Glenn. And I do feel like, Chris, if this was a question you were going to pose to Glenn, then it's a question that could have easily been posed if we were able to have a meeting, to have a full discussion about the questions that were, that were being requested to discuss. And I don't know, because I'm not Josiah, but it just feels really disingenuous that we would have this conversation without. that we would have this conversation without him being present when we've had the opportunity and we can still have the opportunity to put those requested items on an agenda so that we can have the conversation and Glenn, by way of the MASC, can provide the clarification that you were just looking for. Because this is the same conversation that we've been begging to have and we've been not able to have it and now you get to just bring it up. And not all of us are, who have been requesting that meeting are even here to have it.
I was, I was giving very specific, I was asked to put something on, on a particular, my agenda, on the agenda for the ad hoc. And I didn't know whether it should be on it, because it was a specific question. Giving permission for something to happen that wasn't approved in the process. And I said, we need to get an opinion first, what the effect of that is on the process. And Josiah did call Glenn to get, because that, when he gave me the question, it was very specific to, to give them permission to see everybody who applied. And I, and that's what I, I said, ask Glenn whether that, what effect that has on the process, which doesn't say that in the process, before we put it on the agenda, what, what would be, before I put it on ours.
But ultimately, as the process goes forward, it's majority rules, minority rights. So takes four votes to appoint anybody. And if a majority is happy with the process, they continue. If the majority is not happy with the process, they can take another course of action. And I will say that, um, I had conversations with your legal counsel throughout a lot of these. I believe that your legal counsel has very, has served you very well and has, uh, attempted and successfully stayed within the letter of the law and the letter of the instructions that were given. Made difficult decisions in doing that, but that was delegated to the law firm. And there are privacy rights that apply to the candidates, uh, whose names were not going forward or who weren't given interviews. And those privacy rights can be in jeopardy if the information is of who they are is shared more widely, especially if their current employers find out they were looking for a job.
Well, we did have one person whose name was exposed by our mayor at a press conference and he made it clear that one of the candidates was, was allegedly related to one of our school committee members in a public meeting. So when that happened, we wanted clarification, because we felt like if he knew who one of the candidates were before those names were released and before anyone knew who those folks were that were not qualified, then, then something is not transparent in the process.
The majority of the school committee can deal with that.
Absolutely, thank you.
So Monday, if, we'll check, Patty, you'll send out something tonight? And it was three that we came up with, right?
Yes, I can do anytime after 3:00 PM.
And Bob?
I can do from 3:00 PM on, sorry if that's helpful, I can be in Springfield by 3 o'clock.
Yep.
And you're good with three.
I'm good with.
So we've got four of us are good with three, we need to check with Peter and Josiah. Okay, we'll see if we can get that set up. And maybe we can, I'm, I'll sketch a timeline, but maybe we can actually do that Monday, maybe it's better to do that when we're all here together. Rather than, I, don't you think, I think it'd better, we do it as a group.
I just have a hard stop at five, so, so I'll be before five, I'm good.
Well, starting at three should give us a chance to do that.
Do that.
If there's nothing else, then a motion to adjourn, that's all, because we are in a meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second.
We'll call.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez, absent.